About the right side that came to the ready go there, guys? It's nine o'clock. We'll call the meeting of the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners to order. We'll also be meeting at 9:15. It's the Board of Equalization. Both meetings follow the Open Meetings Act as amended and a copy of which is posted, a new one, at the entry of the room. Thank you, Tammy and Naco. Pardon me? Oh. Yes, the first order of business is to open with prayer. Would you please join me? Dear Heavenly Father, we just ask that you be with us today in our deliberations, that you make us mindful of those wishes and needs of those that we represent. Thank you for the abundance of moisture and the green crops. We would ask, Father, to be with those that put their selves at harm's way to protect the many rights and freedoms that we have. That includes our military, our first responders, and law enforcement. Just ask that this be a good deliberation today and that you be with those less fortunate than ourselves. We pray with these things in our holy name, your holy name, amen.
Amen.
First action item is approve the minutes of the meeting May 6th. I'm going to entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I will make a motion that we approve the minutes regarding the Lincoln County Board of Commissioner meeting from May 6, 2024.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call vote. Please, Tammy.
Luer.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Bruns.
Aye.
Weems.
Aye.
Hugley.
Aye.
Next item, claims and treasures receipts as presented. I think those were in our minutes over the weekend that we could review agenda. Entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we approve the claims and treasures receipts as presented.
Second. Motion and second. Discussion. Roll call.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Weems.
Aye.
Luer.
Aye.
Bruns.
Aye.
Hugley.
Aye.
Next item is to receive and order filed a fee report submitted by the county clerk.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we receive and order filed the fee report submitted by the county clerk.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Bruns.
Aye.
Luer.
Aye.
Weems.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Hugley.
Aye.
I always do have the clerk to have a few claims for us today, so I appreciate that. Not.
The piles have been a little skinny lately. We knew it was going to catch up to us.
Number one. How come I got number one?
Yes, six right behind it.
Well, that's quite weird. I'd say. Abnormal.
Anybody have any almond stock here? Might want to get some.
Almond? Yeah. No, no.
There's number two.
We're going to be getting kind of up here.
Something with plain lime here. We'll find out. But your time's coming. We'll be talking about. Thank you, B. Forty-three?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Oh, yes. But you know what? We still haven't got that yet, though.
Maybe we can get an update.
It's 9:15. We will recess as the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners convene as the Lincoln County Board of Equalization again following the Open Meetings Act as amended and posted at the entry of the room. First order of business is to approve the minutes of the May 6, 2024 meeting. I entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion we approve the minutes regarding Lincoln County Board of Equalization meeting held on May 6, 2024.
Second. A motion and a second. Roll call.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Weems.
Aye.
Luer.
Aye.
Bruns.
Aye.
Hugley.
Aye. Certificates of correction or refund, and I see none. Thank you, Julie. Any other business to come before the Board of Equalization? We will. Chad like to have it turned over to at least sixteen. There it is. Now I can say, fully cheering as the Lincoln County Board of Equalization reconvene as Lincoln County Board of Commissioners at 9:16.
It'll take some time to pour over those minutes next week. Make sure they're accurate.
Beth, I'm sorry you have to set. Bruce, it's an interesting meeting. You could have been on the interstate counting poles or something. Lives up north of Sutherland or south of Sutherland still, right?
Who? Oh, yes. I thought you had a town in.
Lynn lives here in town.
Over on Rose Court.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
We had some conversation about that that I might bring up at the end of the meeting.
Okay. I thought it should be more. I thought it was south of Sutherland. South of Hershey.
South of Hershey.
Hershey. It's right here.
On Frederick's Road?
Yeah, Frederick's Road. And we take their past away, Donna.
Morning, Jerome.
Doing a good job over there, Ken.
Thank you.
They're making good progress.
I try. I do my best.
If you'd have thrown half of them out, we'd be done.
Well, the bundling thing is helping.
Yes. That was a... That was a very ideal.
Told... I instructed Nicole not to come back next week without at least six or seven of those bundling options. She assured me that would have to be the way it would be. Is that what you said?
Is that just once a year?
Yeah, that's our annual contract. Yeah, that's the annual fee. I think we... I think that was a three or five-year contract last time we talked and renewed it.
Good morning, Mr. Chantay. You missed all the excitement. It was really wild in here before you got here.
Telegraph's the only one that's got the scoop, though. They've got the whole story.
Yeah, she did it with 13 words.
Thank you. It's been a real quiet meeting. You haven't missed much. 13 words worth.
I was trying to figure out what the other eight were for.
We need these quiet, low-key meetings once in a while. There's still a lot left, though. Very good.
It's just gonna be this way. Right. Nitrogen.
For the most part, you're getting them in order.
Yeah, they'd be a little less hassle.
Yeah. We're missing a number. 21A. 111A.
Let me get me a paper cut the way I clean those over there.
See, I thought that was coming in on charge to get... I must be wrong. Must be going out. I thought the piece of property came in instead of down. But I know that our cell phone bill comes out and our regular phone bill comes out, but I thought that was the main people.
But I guess it isn't. I thought we still had a fee with them. Yeah, I know it's that much. Counterbalances. I thought it wouldn't be until August timeframe, August, September timeframe.
For the next update?
This should be 1/25. Memory serves me right.
I think they were here in...
Yeah.
When we were down for planning and zoning, they were here.
It's 9:30. Our next agenda item is to hear from a Elizabeth Farrell, J.D., Legislative Counsel, Legal Counsel, and many other items or something like that. Welcome, Beth. If you would please just sign in and let us know your name. Glad to have you here. Beth's gonna talk to us and give us a little update about some events at the Legislature, so welcome. I hope you had a good drive.
Thank you. It's nice and early, a little more rain, it's always...
If you could just hit that button, that circle button. Thank you.
Okay.
Chris said I can turn it off. I just can't turn it on.
Okay. Well, thanks for letting me be here. We're doing our sort of summer tour of going to a board meeting in every county just to give a little update. You know, the road goes both ways. We ask you to come to Carney and to Lincoln, and we'll ask you to come to Ogallala this fall, and so it's nice to get to see you on your home turf. Plus, I grew up in Valentine, and it's nice to get back to this end of the state, so...
What number are we on your list?
You are number 10 for me. Probably about the same for Elaine and John, Luke, maybe a few less. I don't know if Candace has gotten any of hers started yet, so we're... But it's always a lot of fun to, you know, just see everybody, so... Just a couple of things to talk about. Our next upcoming events will be the County Budget Workshop and County Board Workshop. Those will both be in Carney. The Budget Workshop starts on the morning of June 12, and we have... We'll have presentations from the State Auditor's Office, the Property Tax Administrator, and ZEL. They've been working with us on a study of employee salaries. Everyone's really struggling, all employers are, with recruitment and retention, and so we're hopeful that this will give us some... Everyone some ideas about what's, you know, going on in their surrounding counties. We'll also have the Governor. When we'd asked him to come and speak, that was, you know, during the session, and if I would have been here a month ago, I would have been saying some... Probably some different things about the session than now because we thought that the property tax package would be a done deal. I think everybody did, and that's not how it turned out. So it'll be interesting to have him there. Good to have him talk about what his plans are for property tax relief for the special session. I don't have any real special insights or anything about the special session, other than, you know, what we've all seen in the media about, you know, sometime probably late July. We assume there will be some of the same ideas that were in the bill that we thought would pass, but as far as specifics, I don't know, so perhaps he'll be able to share some of those by that point. After the County Budget Workshop, then that afternoon, we'll go into the County Board Workshop, and that'll be that afternoon, and then the next day we'll have the sort of the same format that we've had in the past with general sessions and then some breakout sessions, and we've got topics on, you know, a whole host of things. Property tax, human resources. I think there's a session on artificial intelligence, just a number of different things so that we can kind of try and have a little something for everybody, the different interest areas. Then our next event after that will be in Ogallala. We'll have our Legislative Workshop in our new facility. Thank you, Joe. October 11, and so we'll be looking at what our legislative priorities will be for the year. Of course, we'll respond to whatever's introduced, but these will be the things that we want to pursue for the coming year. So if you have ideas about legislation, this is the time to let us know, and I'll get them, you know, on our list. I've got a list started for '25 and for 2026, so we're, you know, looking down the road a ways. As far as other legislation, inheritance tax, of course, was the big issue, and again, if I would have been here a month ago, I would have been saying different things about that. The inheritance tax... The bill that would have eliminated inheritance taxes did not pass this year, and I think that was due to the work that all of you did, that county officials really made the point that if inheritance taxes go away, we need 100% ongoing replacement sustainable revenue because that's... Inheritance taxes are such a vital part of what counties have for revenue source. When it got toward the end of the session, we were in negotiations and had agreed to a piece of that for a replacement revenue from the documentary stamp tax. That bill didn't end up passing, so we're working this summer with a group of senators and also that's sort of one half of our group. The other is we're going to meet with every affiliate group and the county boards from each district to talk about what... What are our options for replacement revenue? You know, what are things that counties do that might be a funding source, or maybe there are things that counties do that we don't need to do anymore? Or, you know, what are unfunded mandates? All of those kinds of things to kind of figure out what our options are going into the fall, into the legislative session. So I think we'll start with some meetings actually the end of this week and then on into the next couple of weeks, so we should be able to have more to talk about with that at the County Board Workshop, too.
Beth, if I can, we have a very seasoned reporter in the rear of the room, and he happens to be breaking in, a very bright, young reporter. And we have... I'd like to explain, we, the county, looking for replacement revenue, not just because we want more revenue or we want to spend it, we're looking for replacement revenue because right now, if we didn't have that, we would need to raise property taxes to replace that. I don't think there's anybody around this table that's real... Thinks a good idea that we raise property taxes, so that's how come we ask Nebraska Association of County Officials, and they've worked so hard to try to find a replacement revenue so that we don't have to replace property taxes. I've had my editorial thank you, and I'm sorry for interrupting.
Oh, no.
All right.
I think that's great, too, to say that. Another bill that I want to talk about was one that... LB 1300. There is a piece of that that was introduced as LB 869, and that actually came from Lincoln County, from Michaela and from Tom Gann, VSO, and that would expand the ability to provide services to veterans who served not only in wartime but also in peacetime, and so I think that's going to be a huge benefit, and that really was due to your persistence and, you know, really pursuing that, so that will be something that will be a real benefit.
Thank you for the kind words. All's I was was the cheerleader. Tom did all the hard work with recognizing the deficiency and working with your office and VSOs from across the state to get good language written, and I just... I just kept the conversation alive. And your office, Beth, was incredible for all the support and advice and working with Senator Jacobson, so it was nice that we got that wrapped up and we can move on to other things now.
Yes, it was a great team effort, and if you haven't seen the transcript of that Government Committee hearing, it's online, and that... Wow, it's really... It really is moving, so...
It was moving.
Yeah, it's very good, so we'll see that coming up. A couple of other bills. I have a long list, but I think I'll just mention a couple of them. There are some changes to the Open Meetings Act, so we'll be sending out a new poster in July, and I think Elaine has sent out emails about that and the different deadlines. One of the things that is included in there is there is language that requires public comment period or an ability for the public to comment at every meeting, so I know some counties have that, some counties don't, and so that's something that everyone will need to have going forward, and not just counties, but school boards and every public body. There are also some publication changes and a few other things. The language with the changes to date is... That's on our website and can be printed out, and then, like I said, we'll have the posters. There were also some changes to the County Purchasing Act that we were able to get passed this year. We all know how much prices have gone up for everything, and right now the threshold is $50,000 to trigger competitive bidding. Starting January 1, that amount will go up to $70,000, and then we have progressive amounts after that. The reason we put the additional amounts in there is that way we don't have to go back to the Legislature every time and ask for an increase. And then the changes for informal bidding and surplus property and those kinds of things, those were increased as well. There was an increase or a continuing appropriation for the county bridge match, so there will be $4 million this year, $4 million next year before that program sunsets. We've been working on putting together a committee. There are appointees from counties and from the Department of Transportation that will help decide where that money goes and make those awards. There were some changes, some clarifications to valuation, a couple of homestead clarifications, and there was initially, again, a month ago, I would have said... Talked about the big package that was there. The fiscal note on that was too high, so the bill didn't pass as it was... Came out of Revenue Committee. We'll be seeing that next year, some changes. Senator Jacobson has said that he's going to pursue some more homestead exemption opportunities for veterans. That was one of the things that Senator Day had been doing as well, and that was sort of the impetus for that bill initially. There's another bill that would talk about how long... Or public records, when there's a public records request, how long counties and other public bodies need to do researching, redacting, and so on of records without charge. That was changed from four hours for everyone to eight hours for Nebraska residents and the media and people who are not Nebraska residents or the media. It would go essentially from the first hour. There are more details to that, but that's sort of the big picture of it. I think we'll see more of that. There's an interim study to look at public records and how that works, and there was also a Nebraska Supreme Court case a couple of months ago on that issue, so there'll be an interim study that we'll be involved in with that. I don't know if I mentioned it, but there are also a couple of interim studies on inheritance taxes, unfunded mandates, some other things. So we will be busy this summer as well with other legislative issues, because I can go on, I've got a list, but if you have any questions of me, I'm happy to answer them. Otherwise, I guess I do just have one little housekeeping thing. A couple of weeks ago, we had an upgrade to our phone system, so if you're used to calling our office and you know someone's extension number, add a 1. So, for example, I used to be extension 222, now I'm 1222. It's all on the tree, it's in the menu and the whole bit, but if you don't want to have to listen to the menu, you know, try a 1 first, see if that works, so...
Thank you. Questions for Mrs. Farrell?
It was a pretty concise summation, Beth. Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, I heard Senator Jacobson say that they threw so much garbage into that homestead exemption thing that was just... It was just a point where... And I think he's gonna spearhead something on his own next session and try to keep that thing from getting all these adandums and amendments and so forth, but it didn't even look like it was gonna do any good. It was gonna actually be detrimental in some regards.
That package that came out of the Revenue Committee was very different.
Yeah, it's terrible. Well, honestly, it was terrible, in my view. I'm not ready to, so hopefully they can clean that up, and, you know, he does the right thing because he goes and asks the county officials involved. And, you know, he does the right thing because he goes and asks the county officials involved that are, you know, that are impacted, and that's really, that's really a plus for his representation, I think, for us.
Yes, that's, that's very good.
Yeah. We appreciate, we appreciate his cooperation.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Beth.
Thank you, Beth.
The next item is to discuss, consider approving the overlay contract with Western Engineering Incorporated for LCDOR 2024-1. Good morning, Jason.
Morning.
Morning, everyone.
Jason Schultz, Lincoln County Highway Superintendent.
Good morning, Jason.
Good morning, sir.
Uh, so I think, I think I'll let Tyler take the lead on this.
What the board has in front of it is the contract to Western Engineering for the overlay project, hopefully starting, well, contractually starting here in June, once you sign this thing. If it looks familiar, it's because it's the same as the last three that I've done with Western, only the amounts have changed.
You mean the amounts have changed?
Well, the contract amount, how much we're paying then.
Oh, okay.
New and modern amount.
And this is for the North Maxwell Road?
No.
No. This is for the subdivision work, so some of Hillcrest and with the alternate would be all of Indian Hills as well.
Could you clarify the amount, dollar amount is what we approved?
Yes.
In our motions before, when the bids that came in.
Okay.
Chairman, you ready?
I am ready.
It'd be my motion to approve the contract with Western Engineering on overlays identified as LCDOR 2024-1, and authorize your signature.
Second. Motion to second, discussion. When will this begin, do you think, Jason?
June 1st.
Uh, yeah, I believe they have June 1st and completed by the June 15th, so.
Super. Folks out there will be very appreciative. Other questions, discussion? Roll call vote?
Williams.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Wulver.
Aye.
Brunz.
Aye.
Kueble.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jason.
Thanks, Tyler.
Well, it's illegal.
Next time, put the glass over the pot.
Dallas, Texas on this date. Are we doubling up and down?
Well, this is, this is a new claim, right? I just, otherwise we just.
Okay, that's all we've done your three last week. Because you can't just claim for one thing.
Hey, yeah, from last week.
He's got his special piece of equipment.
Just trying to add it or something, maybe.
Supposed to be 17, right? 167. Looks like we need.
It's supposed to be 17, right? 167.
Looks like we need. 167. We're done. 167. We're done.
It's supposed to be 17, right? 167.
Looks like we need. 167. We're done.
We're done.
Wait, a little longer. Grabber, I don't know. Guess we'll find out two minutes.
It's 9:55. The next agenda item is to discuss, consider setting a new date to receive bids for the Lincoln County Detention Center Food Service Contract, Sheriff.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Sheriff Jerome Kramer and Lieutenant Penny Ball.
Well, Jerome and Penny are signing in. Uh, this is on the agenda today because I got the RFP from the sheriff's office last week after the board approved the date and they got back and they took a look at it. And so I'll blame the lawyer on this one. I got to looking at it, it hadn't changed in 20 years. It appeared to be the same one Joe Wright put together when they got the predecessor for Summit on the Hook so long ago. Uh, so I took some time and went through that, missed the publication deadline in The Telegraph, is what happened. And so we just need to move it back a week. It's ready to go now. The board approves the new date today. They will get it to The Telegraph right after the meeting. Right, and we'll get somebody new on the hook, so.
Did you have a date today? Did you discuss a date with clerk's office?
Yes, the original date was to have the bids due by today.
Right, but I'm saying for the new.
New one is the 20th.
In other words, have you had a conversation with anybody in clerk's office about an open spot? We got plenty of room, huh?
Let's, let's make sure so that we don't need it.
When are we looking at?
Next week, or 27th.
27th.
It was originally set to be May 20th, but we can't make two consecutive weeks under the County Purchasing Act.
Just stretch it out one more week here.
We could have gotten it published twice, just it would have been in the same week as well.
Right.
So it would be the 28th.
Tuesday, it would be a Tuesday, 28th.
28th.
Because of Memorial Day, holiday.
And you have wide open.
It is wide open.
So we can pick a time, 10 o'clock or something.
That would be your meeting.
Whatever, we don't care.
Yes.
You want 10 o'clock?
Ready for motion?
I am.
Chairman, I'd move to set Tuesday, May 28th.
7th. Yeah, 8th.
28th.
28th.
It's a Tuesday.
3rd.
Holiday.
Yep.
On Monday. So the 28th at 10 a.m. to receive bids and consider those for the Lincoln County Detention Center Food Service Contract.
Second.
The motion to second, any discussion? Roll call vote?
Williams.
Aye.
Wulver.
Aye.
Brunz.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Kueble.
Aye.
Lieutenant has a list of potentials that may not find in the paper, so we'll get it out to them, too, so.
Good deal.
On top of it, so. Joe?
We have to change my date. I got the 27th in the thing, so I'm going to change to 28th. Clearly, I forgot about Memorial Day.
Okay, thanks.
You know, Penny, what we like about you is unlike some people over there, you don't come over and ask for money all the time.
Well, I could change that.
I'm not going to bring, I'm not going to mention anybody's name, but.
But he also brings goodness.
He never brings burritos or donuts, though.
Well, this is true.
Good morning, Lieutenant Dan. Good to see you.
You, you know where he parks, right?
I didn't park, I didn't park over there this morning, so there you go. They always draw down.
So, let's see. Application number eight for Kia, is this the one that we approved last time?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah. That's a formal point, no?
All right.
I asked that same question a little bit ago, so.
It's 10 o'clock. The next item is to discuss, consider action on the Lincoln County Employee Benefit Committee recommendation. Lincoln County Benefit Employee Committee members and. Good morning.
Good morning, Greg.
Good morning.
Good morning, Greg.
Good morning.
Good morning, sir.
For the, for the press, would you just state your name and who you're with, please?
Greg Mooney, Nebraska County of, Nebraska Association of County Officials.
Okay. Somebody start this baby off. Greg, committee, whomever, I mean.
So we gave a, Mr. Chairman, we gave our recommendations last week, and it sounded like there was a lot of, there was a lot of information that was passed, and we felt prudent at that last meeting to give time for everybody to digest everything. I know that there were some questions. Greg, thankfully, with the help of Mike, I believe, ran through and made some adjustments and ran a few different cost projections based on questions that board members had raised during that conversation, and I believe everybody received those last week and hopefully has had time to digest those, those numbers for today's meeting. Greg, why don't you kind of run through a few of the different things that you've done as far as the, the adjustments for different options for this board to consider?
Sure. So I know it's a, it's a lot of information, and thank you for going through that. So what we had done was we, there's three different contribution schemes at three different county percentage contribution levels. So we've got a 70%, a 75%, and an 80% county contribution. And within each one of those, we looked at the employee paying, single employee paying zero, the single employee paying 5%. And then on top of that, we added a $1,000 deductible option as well. And so if we look at, you know, I'm not sure how you have it all packaged up, but for example, if in the top left, you'll see it says employee 5%, which is EE 5%, ER 70%. So that's, that's the employee taking on 5% of, just a single employee taking on 5% of the premium, and then the county taking on the rest.
And that's a premium that we had provided at zero cost to those employees previously.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely. So this is just an example of what it might look like, broken down. Similar to the previous examples, we have, we have.
It's 10 o'clock. The next item is to discuss, consider action on the Lincoln County Employee Benefit Committee recommendation. Lincoln County Benefit Employee Committee members, and... Good morning.
Good morning, Greg.
Good morning.
Good morning, Greg.
Good morning.
Good morning, sir.
For the press, would you just state your name and who you're with, please?
Greg Mooney, Nebraska Association of County Officials.
Okay. Somebody start this baby off. Greg, committee, whomever, I mean...
So, we gave a, Mr. Chairman, we gave our recommendations last week, and it sounded like there was a lot of, there was a lot of information that was passed, and we felt prudent at that last meeting to give time for everybody to digest everything. I know that there were some questions. Greg, thankfully, with the help of Mike, I believe, ran through and made some adjustments and ran a few different cost projections based on questions that Board members had raised during that conversation, and I believe everybody received those last week, and hopefully has had time to digest those numbers for today's meeting. Greg, why don't you kind of run through a few of the different things that you've done as far as the adjustments for different options for this Board to consider?
Sure. So, I know it's a lot of information, and thank you for going through that. So, what we had done was we, there's three different contribution schemes at three different county percentage contribution levels. So, we've got a 70%, a 75%, and an 80% county contribution. And within each one of those, we looked at the employee paying, single employee paying zero, the single employee paying 5%. And then, on top of that, we added a $1,000 deductible option as well. And so, if we look at, you know, I'm not sure how you have it all packaged up, but for example, in the top left, you'll see it says employee 5%, which is EE 5%, ER 70%. So, that's the employee taking on 5% of, just a single employee taking on 5% of the premium, and then the county taking on the rest.
And that's a premium that we had provided at zero cost to those employees previously?
Yes, absolutely, absolutely. So, this is just an example of what it might look like, broken down, similar to the previous examples we have, you know, brought here.
And this first one is what the Benefits Committee had made recommendations on last week?
Yep.
That's the very first page, Chris?
Correct.
Okay.
Keeping it at a $500 employee deductible, the county buying that down to the $500 deductible.
Okay, thank you.
And so, I mean, really, the most important number that we're looking at here on this first one is, you know, the actual and expected, you know, costs to the county. And so, I mean, without, if we just left everything as is right now, going from, with the same plan and everything, you know, at the 1.10 tier level that NACO had, you know, come up with for Lincoln County, we're looking at, you know, under the current plan, we're looking at, you know, 2.9 for the county, 2.9 million for the county. Previous to that, it was 2.7.
Yeah, so explaining that's with our 8.7% rate increase, that no matter what plan option we choose, we're going to see a rate increase, and that's roughly $200,000 from this last fiscal budget, as far as an increase for our health benefits.
So, roughly last time, rather than the 2.9, we would have been looking at 2.7?
Correct. So, that's the base, where no matter what plan option we're looking at, we're going to anticipate a $200,000 increase.
That's right.
Absolutely. And then, you know, as we look at this, we were looking at the dual option, the 2,600, and then the 6,100, you know, HSA qualified plan. And so, as I believe it was the understanding last time that we were here, if we went that route, if we look at the actual and expected costs on that $2,600 plan, and then the, and then the $6,100 plan, the cost to the county is going to fall somewhere in between that, you know, the 2988 and the 2874, if you're just following that along in the actual and expected to that $2,600 plan plus co-pay and the 61 high deductible health plan.
So, in other words, it would have been an increase of, I'm not going to talk about the 8%, I'm going to say, we got to start somewhere, we're starting 2904, okay, because the others passed. So, from the base, if we would have remained the same as we are, it would have added another $84,000 on one and something less on the big one. Okay. That's what I'm going to be looking in terms of is what are we adding? Okay, thank you. But the actual would be somewhere in between those two numbers, because not everybody's going to go one or the other.
Exactly, yeah, exactly. So, and then, so if we, and this is just the 5% employee contribution, 70% employer contribution, but then the next page, we still looked at going with 0% single employee contribution. And so, if we go down to the actual and expected costs, you know, we're, county is looking at somewhere between, you know, again, if you did nothing, it's still that 2904, but if we're looking at going with the dual option, at 26 and 61, we're looking at somewhere between that $3 million and 2.9, somewhere in between there.
Three million, 45,000.
Yeah, yeah.
Is that 45,000? I mean, we start adding tens of thousands.
So, we're on second page.
Yep.
A deductible buy down.
And we're looking at the county's portion, so we're staying on the line that says actual expense, so everybody's on the same line, right?
Yep.
And going across, thank you. Does that include any contribution to the HSA?
So, it does. We just left the contribution. So, at the bottom here, it says HSA deposit is 1,500 for singles and then 3,000 for employee plus. Yep.
That stays the same through the projections?
Yes, exactly, yep. And then, the only other thing that we had factored in is potentially increasing that cash and lieu to 500 from 400, and so, that is reflective on the $2,600 plan and the $6,100. If you go about halfway down the page, cash and lieu says four and 500.
Yep, got it.
Okay.
Got it.
So, that's with the employee, the single employee still zero contribution, and the 70% contribution for the rest of the subgroups, which lowers their premium considerably, correct?
Yes, yes.
So, let's also state that we are making the assumption that we have an HSA, and that hasn't changed. We don't have an HSA right now, so we're making the assumption that we are having an HSA. We want to make sure everybody understands.
You're correct, you're... Absolutely. And then, on the, does it have...
And of that HSA, what portion is a contribution by the county? What portion would be a contribution by the employee?
So, in this, in this figure, we had just calculated up a single contribution to a single person, 1,500.
By them.
By the county.
Okay, that, we got to clarify that, because these plans go both ways. It goes zero, 100% or a blend in between. So, let's make that clear when we say that, because this is a new program that we don't have. So, we're going to let people know that that would be the county contributing in detentional 1,500 to the Health Savings Account, which is set up for the employee.
Absolutely.
Through the high deductible plan.
Through, yes.
Should they choose the high deductible plan.
And that's only through the high deductible, correct?
Correct.
Yes.
Absolutely. And these figures are just reflecting if the county contributed that. Now, the HSA can be however you want to figure that out, if the employee wants to contribute.
We can choose a different amount.
Yeah.
But we need to state that for people that, that's making that assumption, which we hadn't said, so...
Absolutely.
Good clarification.
Okay. And then, third page for that 70% county contribution. So, again, this is still the employee paying 0%, and then the county picking up 70% of that single employee cost on top of what they're originally paying for, a single employee. So, but this has...
The 70% of single plus?
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay.
Yep, single plus, so spouse, child, family, absolutely.
Okay.
And then, this third page is with a $1,000 deductible. First two are $500 deductibles, this third one is a $1,000 deductible.
County pays it down to 1,000?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, with that HRA, yep. And then, again, if we just, I mean, we're focusing on this actual and expected, you can see how those numbers reflect, and again, we'd be, or the county would be, you know, hitting a number somewhere in between there.
And that's still with the $1,500 county contribution to the high deductible plan for a HSA?
Yes, correct.
Okay, so we're talking buy down on the HRA on the HSA?
Buy down on the HRA and then contribution to the HSA.
That's correct, so...
Absolutely. All right. Any more questions before I move on to...
Can we talk about the 5% thing for a second? I hate to take something back, and maybe, you know, net out-of-pocket doesn't appear maybe hurting the client or the employee with the 5% thing on the single, but it was a good point made, or sidebared last week, that perhaps we should recognize that there's some doubling up of single employees that have coverage somewhere else, and we don't really know that. So, they've got the single coverage that could really go away, because they're actually on their spouse's plan somewhere else, and I don't know if we have the data on that or information, but I guess that would, to me, it would impact whether you're going to do the 5% skin-in-the-game approach.
Be the primary reason, whatever.
That, you know, so, I mean, I hadn't thought of that, and somebody told me that honestly, because I'm like, well, you know, historically, we've had people that took the single and, in essence, you know, doing the same thing as the buy down.
Yeah, don't take it, it's just there.
I mean, in lieu of, I'm sorry, that you compel them not to duplicate. So, I'm just wondering if that was, if we even know that that's an issue with, are we buying single policies for people that really are, guys are double covered, and we just don't know it?
So, the, the skin-in-the-game, the 5%, right, conversation came from a couple different factors. First factor is we have employees that are eligible for other types of plans, and if it incentivizes by increasing the cash and lieu and requiring a little bit, I'm talking $59, hold on. It may incentivize some of those employees to take those other options. The other is offsetting some of the cost for the other employees that historically haven't been able, due to cost reasons, to participate in the single plus plans, which we've run into some recruiting and retention issues in a few of our departments because of that. So, that's where that conversation came about. So, they're very well, we don't have the data on how many employees, I mean, that's information.
Well, something never be privy to. Well, it would be pertinent to the next conversation a year from now, when you reevaluate, I would think, but, I mean, I don't know how you gather that information, but, you know, that could be a significant thing. And so, on these numbers, you're taking, also taking the in lieu up to 500? I see it's in parentheses.
Correct.
The $500 is reflected on the $2,600 plan plus co-pay and the $6,100 high deductible plan.
It is included in those numbers?
Yes, yeah, about halfway down through the page, you can see the 400 and 500. The 400 is on your current plan, which...
So, that would also be an incentive, if they are duplicated, to just simply drop the single coverage now?
But to Kent's point, the 500 is in parentheses, I don't see a percent, this does reflect 500?
Yeah, just on the $2,600 plan.
And the 6,100?
And the 6,100. That 306 on both of those plans is that 500.
Is it 500, okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
When we talk about recruitment and retention issues, though, I had a good number of employees reach out to me and say, because of the single policy plan, zero contribution from the employee was one of the reasons that they accepted the offer. Every month, we sign payroll around this table. We all know that we have employees making as little as $14 an hour. So, when you talk about only $60 a month increase, that, that's not an only $60 a month increase to a $14 an hour employee.
I'm not trying to sound insensitive to employees in that type of situation. I'm coming at it from the standpoint of the budget, which we wear two hats around this table.
So, when you make a comment...
Yes, we do.
They accept it. I don't understand that comment.
One of the reasons they accepted the job offer from the county...
Oh, I thought you accepted the insurance.
No, one of the reasons they accepted the job offer from the county is other $14 and $15 an hour jobs in North Platte don't have, offer an insurance. And so, I feel like in an, if we're talking truly total compensation package, that's something that we need to consider for those employees.
A question I have. I had the same concerns, but I think we talked about the carrot being the HSA. If those particular employees on the single chose the high deductible, and if we did adopt the HSA as suggested, they are actually getting more money in the HSA than they're paying in premium.
If you use your insurance, yes.
Even if you don't, the HSA is designed for two different types of employees, ones that use their insurance a lot and those that just frankly don't go to the doctor all that often.
Yeah, because you can roll that over. With the HSA, you can roll that over, and there's, there's no time limit. You don't have to use it at a certain point in time.
It's not a use it or lose it?
Nope, nope.
And that would be the reward, if I'm, if I'm understanding this correctly, for those individuals that if they did have to pay the 5%, like on the first page, that's 47.31 a month.
Yeah, that's less than the $2,600.
That's for the family. For the individual, it'd be like 59.09, which is a significant amount, but each year, they're getting HSA money.
I do, I do want to clarify then.
Let's clarify, when you say they're getting HSA money, they're getting their HS money or our HSA money? There's two different things. There's an employee contribution to the HSA, and there's an employee contribution to the HSA. They would get both of those. They would get their contribution back, as well as they would get additional compensation from the county. So, we need to clarify that.
So, yep, I did want to clarify. So, yeah, so the county, that HSA money would be the county contributing to it, that 1,500 for single, 3,000 for employee plus. And then, if they wanted to, then they could contribute on top of that. Now, I do want to clarify, though, you cannot use the HSA money to pay your premiums.
That was a part of the conversation last week.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to make sure.
In, in all the information that Tammy provided to us, it does say that money can only be used for qualified medical expenditures.
Yes, ma'am.
It can't be taken with, you know, if they quit, they can only roll that into another HSA at a next employer or not.
So, since the HSA is with First Concord, they just get to keep that, basically as is. And they could roll it over, I mean, if they really wanted to. There's a technical term for that, but I can't remember it right now. But yes, I mean, they do get to take it if they...
But they only get it if they leave, terminate employment?
So, the county's contribution to that, once it hits their account, that is then their money, whether they stay or not.
Right.
But they can't, if they don't use it, they can't just take it out at the end of the year?
Oh, yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Right.
Qualified health plan, medical expense.
Yes, it has to be for...
Qualified medical expense, yes, ma'am.
Or, like you say, upon termination or something, but it does become their money, that was my point.
And we discussed as a Benefits Committee, how do we mitigate sunk costs if we have an employee that's only here for a month, instead of front-loading that $1,500 the first day of employment or beginning of the year, if that were paid out on a monthly or quarterly basis. And the committee made recommendations, as you recall, to do that on a quarterly basis to mitigate that risk to the county.
Whose bookkeeping job is it to make that?
Clerk's Office. They will work with First Concord.
Is quarterly or semi-annual better? Cut the amount of work in half?
Semi-annual?
Semi, well, obviously, less, less recording is better for, it's easier for the Clerk's Office, but our county clerk made the indication in the Benefits Committee as well as last week that quarterly would be fine.
Okay, super, super.
And that H, I'm sorry, and that HSA is only on the 6,100, that is the...
Yeah. Correct.
Okay.
So, the Benefits Committee did a lot of asking for different levers to be pulled and adjusted to both increase options and allow for rich benefits for the employees when it comes to healthcare benefits, as well as being very mindful of trying to keep that dollar amount as close to that $200 increase as possible that we're going to see no matter what, from a budgetary standpoint for this Board to consider. So, the other options were provided, because there was some questions on, well, what if we were to increase the county contribution for employee plus plans, those other options also, there were options thrown in to, okay, well, if we leave the single employee plans to 0% contribution for the premiums, both that and then raising the deductible up to 1,000, trying to, again, move those levers for our budgetary standpoint.
And a reminder, this is a PPO plan. That $2,600 plan is a PPO plan, which is different than what we have currently. So, increasing that deductible to 1,000, it still leaves the doctor visits at the $30?
Co-pay.
35, co-pay, sorry.
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
Depending on what the issue is.
Right, yes.
Say it again, Tammy.
It's a PPL plan versus what we have now. So, each doctor visit would be, based on what it is, it would be a $30 out-of-pocket at the time visit instead of paying the full amount at the doctor.
Thank you.
So, again, trying to be mindful.
Yes.
And that $30 amount is... And that $30 amount is there until they reach their $1,000 deductible?
It goes toward the deductible, yes.
So that was one thing that we were discussing as far as, yes, if we're asking for a monthly premium contribution of 5% of the premiums for those single employees, how can we offset? And so we were literally taking a look at all the different options offered through these plans, and it's my opinion that we stick with what plan was recommended by the benefits committee, but it's the full board's decision.
That's page one.
Yeah, that's page one. But you have a lot of different options to consider.
Well, and the employee 5% and the total of 75% contribution is close to that, but then that's taking it from 35% to county coverage on family up to 75. And if we go from 35 to 70, we're in pretty good shape. We have increased our coverage.
Which one are you on, Jerry?
I think it's the fourth page.
So while we're looking at that, I have a question. On the pages where we're indicating a 5% contribution by our single employees, but the law enforcement employees do not have that.
So their contribution, yeah, their contribution scheme is completely different.
So the county employees that work in the courthouse would be required to contribute 5%, but the single plan law enforcement employees would not be?
Which, by the way, the state of Nebraska recognizes law enforcement is not the same category as this. They have a separate classification called only law enforcement, and their policy is written different than what ours are.
Okay. And so I believe we're on the fourth page, so we're looking at the employee 5% contribution and then the county 75% contribution for employee plus. So exact same, you know, numbers that we're looking at, you know, actual and expected. Currently, still at 2,904, and then the 2,600 plan and the 6,100 Lincoln County is looking at somewhere in between that 3,006 and that 2,888. But everything else we've discussed still applies. The actual and expected just changed a little bit.
And those numbers do account for money being put into an HSA?
Absolutely.
And the HSA still only applies to the high deductible 6,100?
Yes, ma'am.
And that's $1,500?
For single employee.
For single.
Yes, ma'am.
And Chris, on your recommendation of the committee, you would have two options?
That was one thing that was resounding, is having some options from the employees, both through the survey and then anecdotally, just in conversations with employees in all the different departments. So I think that it's important to do that, I mean, because again, we do have those employees that rarely use their health benefits, they rarely go to the doctor. We have employees that go to the doctor a lot, and having that high deductible option is really catered to those types of employees because their total out-of-pocket at the end of the year is going to be significantly less.
And that's what I noted last week, or noticed last week, was actually out-of-pocket for those who have to utilize healthcare.
Yes.
Actually went down.
It did go down, it's good.
I have a question. Could I ask a question, Jason? Since you have both single individuals that may look at having a single plan, and you also have folks that have families, does this address, this first option, does that address both of those entities in your mind and the folks that you have in your department?
Which plan are you talking about?
We're talking about employee paying 5% of the single-
We're talking any of the plans, but you're talking about page one, is that the way?
Page one.
Did you get the needle?
Yeah, so the first page?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it does, because I think no matter what option we're looking at here, yeah, I think our biggest challenge was the employee plus coverage and the dollar amount, which all these plans we're looking at reduces that, so I think that would help out in our-
And in your situation, that would address both ends of that spectrum, man.
We have, that was the big thing, in the Rose Department, we were having employees that were having to come out of pocket for an employee plus family, a family plan, on a monthly basis, over $1,000 a month for their health premiums. This option on page one brings that down by over half. So, I mean, could it be better? Of course, and I'd love to see it be better, but again, we wear two hats around this table.
And that does help them out.
Yeah, but I think you can see that in the 0% for the single contribution as well too.
I agree with that.
And if you would compare your actual expenses on your 0 versus your 5%, those two numbers, if you look at those, the difference is not real significant.
Not significant at all.
I do want to remind, so currently, the deductible goes January to January, okay? So we just want to make sure that we have an open enrollment in June, because I don't know that we'll see a lot of people opt into the high deductible right now because of the deductibles that are, if you're almost met, you're not going to want to do that until January. So we want to have another open enrollment.
In January.
Before then.
Before.
So, and with more education, and education's going to be key to explain the high deductible plan. I do think it's going to benefit a lot of people, those non-users that don't use it, as well as the users because of that out-of-pocket expense.
That's a great point, Tammy, thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Please, Julie, come up here, could you please?
Julie Stater, Lincoln County Assessor, I just have a question on the HSA, on the high deductible one. What happens then if an employee passes away? Do they list beneficiaries if they've got a big amount, you know, saved up in their HSA? Or is that just gone, or do they lose it? Because if they decide to make contributions themselves and build it up, or even if they, I mean, even if they leave, well, how does that work on the HSA if someone passes away before they use all that?
It should be their money, it should go with them.
It's a qualified health savings plan. It has beneficiaries, I believe.
So the employee would not lose that if it would go to a beneficiary? That would still have to be used for medical expenses for them, I would assume?
Yes, yes. Now, the intricacies of how that paperwork is done, I'm not quite sure yet, but yes, there are beneficiaries.
Greg, if it is qualified money, it should, if it's a remainder value that's not needed for their last care, and the employee passes away, it should just simply go to their estate, should it not?
So that's where education's going to be key?
Yeah.
And that's why we'll educate all those questions, get all those answered, and, yeah.
And then I guess since I'm up here, I will just make a comment, because I did have a question, but-
Okay, but then we're going to kind of wrap it up.
Yep, no, just real quick, my employees in my office, I do have some really long-term employees that have been there a lot of years, and they are very, they're appreciative of the help you're giving toward, to offer for the families, but the ones that have been there for 17 years or 20 years are almost offended by having to start paying for insurance now that they haven't had to do for 20 years. So in my opinion, there's not a huge difference, you know, I guess my thoughts would, I would ask you to lean towards leaving the single family, or the single individual at the zero payment for their own insurance.
Thank you, Julie.
Yep.
You know, I wish that the insurance industry wasn't in a turmoil that it has been the past few decades.
So-
Page three usually raises 0 to 48. It raises their deductible to 1,000. They don't use it very much.
Not on every page, though.
No, he's talking page three specifically.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm going to open this up kind of for some, kind of last questions or comments about if somebody likes a particular plan, doesn't like a particular plan, if we have a specific question we want to have.
Tammy, you alluded, thank you, so let me ask this, Tammy, Tammy, you alluded to the difference between the 0 and the 5 on the-
On the $1,000 deductible items.
Yeah, okay, that's fine. The county's expense is going to be 40,000 difference, one versus the other, 50?
I am looking-
Pretty close, it looks like to me.
So that's on page three, Cam?
Page three, okay.
Oh, I thought it was page two, I'm sorry.
So if you look at, in what's page-
The three I'm looking at is the 70% coverage.
It just didn't have, it didn't have the 5%, it was 0%.
I just wanted to compare the, on the single from, you know, from the two plans that are proposed, the difference in cost, net cost to the county between the 0 and the single to the 5 on the single.
So it is approximately 84,000. If they went, if everybody went with the $2,600 plan, it'd be an increase of 84,000 to the county with a 5% for the employee, or an increase of 129,000 to the county with a 0%.
Right. So I think that kind of reflects a little bit on that second page.
With the $500 deductible?
With the $500 deductible.
That's right.
Buying it down to $500 deductible.
So considering that the insurance industry had an 8.7% increase overall, if we factor that in, I feel like we have, I feel like if we leave the single employees whole and considerably help the single plus families, considering an 8.7% increase overall, I feel like the 0 EE with 70% paid towards the EE plus, and on the second page, I feel like-
And you're talking the $1,000 buy down?
No.
$1,000 deductible?
No, no. The second page, which is 500, which leaves it pretty much what it was for the singles and helps the families.
Yeah, and you're talking, leaving at 0 on the single, but we still have a buy-down on the second column?
Yes.
Right.
And Jason, correct me if I'm wrong, that was what you were speaking to when you just spoke, was page two?
Yeah, I guess I was actually more looking at the page three.
Page three.
Thousand dollar deductible.
So going from a buy-down to $500 deductible for the employees to a buy-down to a $1,000 deductible for the employees.
And it still kept the individuals not having to contribute.
Except their deductible would go up double.
Yeah, their deductible will go up, so kind of pick your poison.
It's a $45,000 difference on those basics.
Yeah, $45,000 difference.
But it is a PPO program.
It is a PPO, so.
Yes.
Yeah, so keep that in mind, we're talking apples and crab apples, not the same thing. They're not apple-noyds, they're still apples.
Yeah.
But they're just not the same, yeah, that's right. The PPO is the difference, which is the co-pay up to your $1,000 deductible of $30 a pop or whatever it is. So for those, for those people that use it, I mean-
There's, all of the plans that have been proposed, they're good plans.
Yes.
I do believe that we are offering options, we are offering good, rich health benefits for our county employees, we're being mindful of that with the PPO, the immense upfront cost that a doctor's visit may cost. We're offering with the HSA, the high deductible, some additional funding to help fund that HSA account, being mindful of the county budget was important from my standpoint. These are all good options. No matter what this board chooses, I think that the county employees are going to be in a better spot than where we are currently.
Obviously, give them a 35% pop right away, plus picking up 8, 9% on insurance on top, and so it's a tremendous benefit for them.
So no matter which one is proposed, and I'm not going to make the motion, but I will probably-
I have a question. Hook holds in what page three is the $1,000 deductible? Employee zero, which satisfies some of those folks, we have opted from 35% to 70, so that's a big plus. But what, the deductible is, raising the deductible from 500 to 1,000 is the hole in that, correct?
Correct.
Yes.
Is that a big problem?
I feel like if you're one of the 74 single employees taking that benefit, I feel like that is a problem.
See, and we've had conversations, members on the benefits committee and myself, that we've had employees say, look, we've had really rich benefits for a long time, and we understand that the industry's changed, we understand that there's going to be some changes. So it's, those are the conversations that we've had.
I didn't have any of those employees reach out to me.
And I understand, no, I know the, I know the few employees that have reached out to you, because they've reached out to me too. So I'm, we have, we have those conflicting opinions, and I understand that there's, no matter what happens, there's change.
Yes, I feel like if retention and recruitment and total compensation is one of our end goals, I feel like page number two is where we need to be. And like I said, considering an 8.7% increase, even if we had changed nothing, we were going to experience that, right?
Yes, ma'am.
So I feel like all the work that you guys and the committee put into coming up with the proposal on page two, it's a $45,000 difference between page three. I feel like if we want to retain our employees that are, the 74 that are taking that single package, that needs to be a consideration.
Tammy, can I put you on the spot and show on this committee?
Okay.
Just page one, are you comfortable with page one, adopting those?
So I have mine all sorted out, remind me what page one is.
Well, it's the 70 and the 5.
Is the 5%?
5%.
Yes. I'm conflicted, I'll be honest with that, with the 5% as well as-
That's what I wanted to hear, your honest opinion.
Yeah, I'm conflicted on the 5% looking at the actual numbers of that.
Well, when you, I guess last week when we looked at, you know, cosmetically, it doesn't look good, but when you looked at out-of-pockets, that, you know, the employee group is benefiting. Wrong, right, wrong?
Between one and two, and I think that's kind of where I'm hearing this thing right now, so between one and two, the difference is the, when you look over into the 26, when you look in the next column on the employee plus, okay, that's where we see a little difference in cost, okay? Say I'm going to call it 50,000, I'm going to call it 55, $56, $57,000 additional to the county on the employee plus.
Between page one and page two.
Between page one and page two. Page two gets rid of the 5%. Page two keeps Commissioner Ullrich happy about the single employees and the 5%. I agree with Commissioner Brunz. These are all win-win. Every single one of them are for the employees, because we're not talking about employee, we're talking about plural employees. Everybody's in a little bit different role. Everybody's either single or married, you know, nobody's the same, so we have to look at this as a big picture. We can't be talking, well, these two or three employees would be better for the- We can't be talking, well, these two or three employees would be better for them, it would, but it might be worse for the other two or three employees that didn't talk to us. So, I'm, I'm going to say I think that we're probably looking at between page one and page two. I don't have a, a strong feeling, I, I will say that we've, when you look, but I do want to be cognizant of costs. And I do want to make sure that we're aware that there is some additional cost when we look at page two. And I'm not saying I'm not for that, but, but, so let's, let's kind of, let's narrow down between those two if we can. That's why I'm not eliminating page number three. Okay? Because we still have those cost savings.
It's just a deductible buy down.
It's just a deductible difference. $500 versus 1,000. That's $500 in a year's time. We're talking about, if, if we're talking about those 74 individuals that have that, that might have to come up with a monthly contribution, my calculations take that somewhere between $567 and $709. That's quite a bit, that's more than the $500 deductible. And the deductible would only come in if you used it. The monthly premium is a given.
So that, and that save, that's a $40,000 a year savings for the county between option page two.
And it gives you the, single, those 74 individuals get their, what they really liked. Obviously, they liked, because 74 of them are done it. But, the thing they're giving up is an extra $500 deductible.
And...
But the bottom line is, it is a cost savings to the county.
Greg, in your opinion, increasing the cash and lieu from 400 to 500, does that provide enough incentive to have employees that may qualify for Medicare to transition to Medicare?
So 500 is, like Jim was saying, when he came down here, 500 is kind of a sweet spot. Now that is taxed, and so it's going to be whatever that is, you know, 500, whatever the tax is. But, just in my discussions with Jim, he says that a lot of people, or a lot of groups that he works with chooses that 500. Some go a little bit more, I mean, there's outliers, but 500 would be able to get them taken care of through Medicare.
Because that's one thing that we need to, we need to consider, and that's part of the considerations that the committee had, is we took an 8.7% increase this year, right around, a little over the average. Wasn't the highest, definitely wasn't the lowest. What are we doing, and then, you know, that probably in future meetings we'll have conversation on a health wellness program that the committee is going to meet again on and discuss different options there. But we've got to be mindful of how we are having rates, because we're not part of a big collective pool when it comes to the renewals anymore, when it comes to those rate increases. We're really going to be looked at and scrutinized based off our claim frequency and our claim severity. And so, keeping that, being mindful of that, to have employees that probably could be on other plans, and should be on other plans, that are affecting our renewal for the rest of the employees is going to be something that this board needs to consider moving forward as well.
Very good point, to bring us back grounded, thank you, Chris.
So if you're talking about raising the deductible, an additional $500 for the single families, or the single employees, that's 41 bucks a month, which almost takes us to the level where we were at with them paying a 5% premium. And, and for a lot of people, $500 doesn't seem substantial, but for a $14 to $16 an hour employee, which most of our employees are in that range, that, that has a pretty substantial impact on their total revenue for their bills.
I understand that. And, and I, I do hear you, and I'm not going to make this point as an argumentative point, so don't take it that way, please. A lot of employers that are paying $14 an hour don't offer health benefits. And the benefits, the other benefits that our county employees do receive.
So what's minimum wage going to in January?
I have no idea, and I don't want to get that as part of this conversation, this could take a lot of...
But that does come into play.
It does, and it...
If, if retention is, is one of our goals.
If retention is our goal, we'll raise it to 20 bucks and we don't have to worry about insurance. Then we can retain people. Correct?
No, not, not correct.
Or 25, we'll keep people if we have good, but we have to keep in mind also, this isn't coming out of my pocket. Well, it's coming out of all our pockets, but it's also coming out of other people's pockets, so. It's, it's a balancing act, and it's, it's a hard one.
It is a hard one, and that's why, I'm, I'm, I'm hearing it, I'm...
It is a hard one.
I just don't think it's going to produce the result that we want, honestly, I don't. There's, there's a lot of employers out there who are paying well above what a lot of our long-term employees already made.
But, Mikayla, I got to remember, remind you, you came from a private industry. Okay? Not government. So you would go out there and probably pay what the, let me finish, please. But I've been around this a long time, and we're supposed to pay according to an array. An array that you're, you're aware of, because you said, and our benefits are also supposed to be on that array. Okay? So I, I need to bring us back to that reality, so that when we do this, we, I, I, when we say, well, other than, I mean, we're always going to have people hire our good employees away from us, probably, because good people are hard to find. You know, I, I can name a half a dozen people right now that'll go into other companies, and, you know, the hospital pays well, so, you know, some of that. So, we're all losing, myself, including in my business, good employees. So, we got to kind of keep the realm in what we're operating in, and, and, you know, keep those parameters in mind.
Well, in the big scheme of our...
I'm going to limit the discussion for five more minutes, then we're going to make a decision.
I feel like in the big scheme of the budgets that we deal with, the 40,000 difference between page three and page two is...
But it's 20% more. It's 20% more, when you look at it. We're already coughing up another 200-plus thousand.
To substantially help...
We've had conversations around this table where less than 40,000 have been a big topic of conversation.
Absolutely.
So, and I get where you're coming from, when we're talking about the wellness of our employees, it does change the dynamic just a little bit.
Yes, it does.
But I just want to make sure that there's, it's not a drop in the bucket, every, every dollar counts.
And I'm going to go back to the fact that the insurance industry had an 8.7% increase. So, I feel like if we want to keep our employee benefits in the same area of quality that they have been, we're going to have to take a little increase.
We are.
We did, the 8.7%, we ate it.
It's 200,000 right off the bat, no matter what plan we choose.
Right, and so for, to leave the, the majority of the employees whole, I feel like the additional increase is worth what we're going to get on return on our investment.
Well, then, the buy downs and the out-of-pocket that were shown last week demonstrate that we do that, even if they do have 5%. So...
I'm not following that.
The overall, the overall benefit with these plans that are being proposed, there is, plans that we're, we're providing, the max out-of-pocket for our employees, which, we run into those, we have, we have garnishments for medical with our employees. We're reducing that pretty substantially with these plan options. That was something that we were taking into consideration.
So Chris, your, your committee, the consortium of employees, county employees, are in agreement that page one is the recommendation of the committee?
Page one is what the committee brought to the board as far as a recommendation last week.
Yeah, okay. Just clarifying that.
How many people are on the committee?
Oh, we have a representative from the sheriff's office, the Rhodes department, county clerk, myself, Tammy, who else?
That's it?
That's it.
Yeah, her from the...
Two from the first, two from Rhodes.
Two from the first, two from Rhodes, sorry.
Mr. Chairman, are you ready for a motion?
Yes.
I will make a motion that we approve for the upcoming county benefits, page two, with the 0% EE paid and 70% EE plus coverage, with the $500 deductible for the $1,600 plan, and a $500 EE deductible for the $2,600 plan. That's my motion.
We have a motion, do we have a second? That's, that's a good plan, but I... Do we have a motion, do we have a second? Are you in a second, plan lacks of advancing?
Take a stab at it, Mr. Chairman?
Can I ask one question first?
I haven't made a motion.
You know, you know what, Jerry, seriously, because it's a tough one, can, can we ask, can, after we, if we get over to the second, can we do it then?
Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that the board adopts plan option page number three. Being mindful of Michaela's concerns with the single employee contribution. It would keep that at zero for the single plans. Raise the county contribution for employee plus coverage to 70%. Authorize both plan options, but would have the county deductible buy down, down to $1,000 for the employee.
So I'll second that.
We have a motion in a second, now, Jerry. Okay, the question I have is, on the HSA, could that money be used to make up that $500 difference in deductible?
Yes.
No. Oh, I can't...
Yes, toward deductible, yes, premium, no. Deductible, that's a, that's, those are healthcare costs.
Oh, yes, deductible, yes.
If you read the information provided by Tammy, the HSA money is only allowed to be used for qualified health expenditures.
Mm-hmm.
So some of those may apply on the deductible.
It allows for co-pays, co-insurance, no. What does an HSA cover? There are thousands of HSA eligible expenses, including but not limited to co-pays, co-insurance, insurance premiums, doctor visits, and surgeries, over-the-counter medications, prescription drugs, birthing and Lamaze classes, dental, orthodontia, vision expenses such as frames, contacts, prescription glasses.
And the HSA is only for the employees that choose the high deductible, the $6,100 high deductible account. So for the employees that stay where they're at now, that is not a benefit they get.
So we went with the PPO plan as the option to mitigate that.
And they can still opt into the HRA plan.
The health reimbursement account.
Yes.
We are offering a lot of options so that the employees can cater a plan that fits their specific needs. This is the first time the county's considering doing that.
Well, you know, in summarizing it, we picked up a large increase in premium because of our usage, and because NACO as a pool had to start breaking it down into subpools. Otherwise, you know, it's just the nature of the beast right now. We, we're going to have to live where we're at, and hope that our coverage, and hopefully a wellness plan, if we get it, will keep us down here, or maybe drop us here, but not raise us here. We've left the buy down to zero or 500 for the, oh, no, it's 1,000 on this one, that's right. We had the buy down 1,000.
Which still is a rich deductible when you look at other plans that are out there.
And maybe if an employee looks at the difference between 5 and 1,000, they'd be more active and buy into the wellness program a little better, possible. Take their, take their, take the situation in their own hands.
Absolutely.
Other questions, comments, concerns, mostly questions at this point? I think it's been said before, but bottom line, either one of these three pages would be a good option for an employee. We're trying to pick the, what fits the most people.
The most people was the 74.
And take into account budget.
Agreed.
Any further discussion? Tammy? You're welcome, please.
Brunz?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Luer?
No.
Woodruff?
Aye.
Hugh Lee?
Aye. Well, it was a tough one, thank you all for that. Thank the committee for their work, thank you for the dialogue, thank you, sir, for bearing with us. Let's see where I'm at on the agenda. Tyler, any need for a close assessment?
At this point, we probably have one next to the end.
Okay. Any concerns from department heads, elected officials? Reports, go, please, sir.
Representing Sheriff Kramer, I wanted to update the board on the NDOT grant that was approved last week on the computer equipment.
Who are you?
I'm Lieutenant Dan Newman from Lincoln County Sheriff's Office, thank you. I was just notified that the award was granted through email this morning while I'm sitting here, but the good news is, because Lincoln County is a targeted county, they doubled from the 15,000 to 30,000.
Whoa!
Fantastic!
Wow!
So, our cost went down to 12,528, so.
Awesome.
Is there a date on the grant?
Thank you, Lieutenant.
Thank you very much.
So you don't, you don't just come and ask us for some money?
Please.
Yeah.
You're turning over a new leaf. That's commendable, you're turning over a new leaf.
Thank you.
But it took the sheriff to come with you to get that.
Do you, I have not heard any more on...
That's great.
The final turning over of deciding of the, oh, Tyler, on the Rainbrower building, are we getting closer on that guy?
They're working on it on their end, it was not as automatic as they thought it would be.
DED was waiting to see you halt the legislation that came through the legislature, just to make sure that nothing changed with that provision.
Which it hasn't, so no reason they just can't sign it.
That was, that was the, that was the reason for the delay that I got from DED.
If you've got juice with DED, give them a call.
Well, I, I don't have juice with DED, but I, we do have some skin in the game, so I think it would be appropriate that I do that, thank you. Any other reports? Report from the emergency management building. Friday they were putting up forms, and I was told this morning that concrete is setting up there right now.
They poured the footings last Tuesday, built forms on Friday, pouring concrete for the pad today.
So, there is progress being made out there.
These are committee records. I had a weeds committee meeting last week. As you know, the wind has pretty much run a lot of interference with a lot of the weed spraying. Now that the wind has died down, they will be rip-roaring and ready to go. So things are moving in a good direction there.
So things are moving in a good direction there. That's all I have.
Anyone else? Thank you, sign a cup, one more claim here. I, this debate today reminds me of, I think it was, and Todd has commented on his articles in the past too, but I think the, it was a recent article in the bulletin about good, healthy debate is good, and we certainly had it today, and I appreciate everybody